For Thursday, August fourth. All three selectmen are present. Town administrator is present. Recording for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Barbara Town.
Good save.
And we also have a few town officials here which will be speaking up on all day later. Don Larson and Don Stevens. Okay, gentlemen, we have some minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from July twenty first, twenty twenty two as amended.
I'll second that. Lean, it was good catch the, on the minutes you caught, I saw you caught some, that section on the. All in favor? Aye.
I'm staying. I'm staying because I wasn't there. Telephone.
Lean left you blank.
Sorry. Say it for me.
Okay, I'm gonna open up a public comment. We'll start with John Stevens, anything for public comment? No. Don, anything for public comment?
Just one thing. You, you, you expect that. I just have some pictures here to show you that the Warren Article fourteen cemetery improvements have been made.
Yeah.
And.
Don, I already beat you too, so I'm online.
Hey, I got contacted from people out of town that want to be buried here now. I mean, former residents.
Oh, former residents, is that permissible?
Yeah.
As long as you're a resident.
Anyone who's a, a resident here or had moved away, they can still buy a lot here.
Okay.
But you gotta, you gotta add a resident.
Stand somewhere.
This lady spent the first twenty-two years of her life here, so. And the rest of her family's already buried there.
For the public, they can see the pictures online on your, which location is it on?
Yeah.
It's, it's on the Dunbarton website.
Yeah. The Facebook.
Facebook website for the, one of the Dunbartons.
Yeah.
Okay. Better yet, take a trip down there and see it in person. Yeah. Okay. Public comment?
Just one thing, something that's just brought to my attention, that we have political signs over on the, where the.
Robert Rogers, right at the intersection there, right in the corner, there's three of them.
What kind of political signs, guys?
State representative.
Hi.
I just, I just noticed them.
Major highway, if they do have them.
Okay.
Will Lean contact them and have them picked up?
No, the, the methodology is a police department pulls them up, puts them behind a police station. If they want them, they pick them up, if not, if they don't pick them up, thirty days they're trashed.
Yeah, that's what Concord does too.
Yeah.
I know.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
They're in the commentary on this?
On the triangle.
Oh, on the triangle.
On the triangle by the statue, but on the telephone side of the triangle, right at the corner.
Okay.
The intersection, there's three of them.
With your big signs, I never noticed the little ones.
Let the police department know?
They, let them direct them to pick it up. And they know how to just make disposition of them.
Now, my old home day banner's there, but I'm a town committee and.
Right.
Town event.
Just to fill the political ones. And on the bottom ones, they can, if they wanna be so kind, on the bottom, there's usually some information, or there should be some information on the bottom of who they can contact sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I put, you were open for a public comment. Anything for the group? No, okay, thank you, sir. All right, closed public comment, bring it back to the board. All right, we're gonna have a public hearing. Do we have a time, Lean, for that?
Yep, it's seven ten.
Uh, okay. Let's, let's skip that for a minute. Let's accept the money, Dave. We're deferring public, opening, um, public hearing to the appropriate time. So we're gonna skip the agenda, go to, uh.
All right, I'll make a motion. Per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, Roman numeral three, subparagraf B, to accept five hundred dollars from old home day fees collected for the vendor table rentals.
I'll second that, I'll second that. Lean, do we have that money?
We do.
Okay. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Great job, great job getting that in my ear, put together.
I do wanna clarify that the committee does that just so they can have extra proceeds put towards the event, if they run over on their budget, right?
We're just going to. Old Home Day Committee, we have four minutes, do you want to defer? Do you wanna defer, it's kinda, just, uh, can you cover the update in like four minutes or less?
Oh, I think we can do it in four minutes.
Okay, you, the Old Home Day Committee on the floor.
Yeah.
I, uh, gave Lean, Lean a copy of the.
You have it in your package.
Yep.
It's back to back.
And then also the. Label old home day, right?
Yeah, I wrote it off the top, yeah.
And a map, map of the commons. Great, okay, and so, so the bottom line is right now, we are, we are looking at a net budget of, uh, forty-two, forty-two fifty-six, roughly. And that, uh, fifty-five oh six is costs and, uh, we, we, we are, we're looking at, um, one, one, one thousand, thousand, thousand two hundred in, uh, in income and one, one of those items, if there's, well, there's, there's the, um, vendors, of course, and then there's the, uh, the, the, uh, food, food tent, which, which allocated seven hundred and fifty bucks and we, we usually sell the food there and we, uh, return that amount back, back into the budget.
Okay.
And, and all of this is as of, as of today, or, uh, so there, that there could be, could be some, some changes, vendors back out or per, per, or, per, 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 formers or whatever, you know, you can have changes and whatnot, but it, it looks like we are staying within, uh, within budget.
I would say so, I applaud the committee for staying in the budget, that's good.
And, um, and once we are all done, what, what ever is, uh, it, our, our budget is five thousand seven hundred, I believe.
Right.
Right, and, um, whatever, whatever we don't use, as I, I under, understand that, that goes back in the town, right?
Correct.
That's what we're doing.
No, we, we don't look, I don't look at the Old Home Day as a money-making operation, I look at it as a celebration for the town.
But it's money in town, so we need to be right about it.
Just, uh, are we still having old home day prices on the food?
Yes, that's the whole reason, what, all we wanna do is break even.
Okay, great.
So we'll have seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of food and water and sodas and stuff like that.
I've never, I've never seen people so happy walking around with two burgers in each hand last year.
Yeah. But, uh, we're gonna have the pies that after the judging and that, we'll be over there with the ice cream. But depending on how many entries we have, we may have to buy a dozen pies from Market Basket or something like that, so.
Okay.
There'll be some added expense, but we'll have cash on hand from the food tent.
And I, the layout, I'm very happy with the layout, you're being sensitive about the construction area, which is thumbs up.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's, uh, uh, I spoke to the foreman, Bob, Bob is his name, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, and, so, here you will see a dumpster, dumpster is still there, that is one that is not on wheels, so he, he, he needs a piece of equipment that he, he isn't going, 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 gonna have to get out of the way, so.
No, I think the green fencing will still be around, so that'll be, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, the ten, ten, one oh one, I don't know where it stayed where it is, but, but the black one is on wheels, so he said they can, they can pull that over.
Thank you to the committee for the hard work, great looking forward to have a great Old Home Day. Any comments from the selectmen?
No, thank you very much.
No.
Thanks for the update.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, we're in public hearing now. Being seven eleven, I'm gonna bump the, uh, public hearing for RSA forty-one colon nine, subparagraph A, to review the proposed fee schedule changes. Lean, it was posted, yes?
It was posted in the paper and on the town website as required by the RSA, and bulletin board actually.
Okay. All right. The first one. For the public who see, who wanna hear about this, I just wanna share that about two weeks ago, we had a workshop where we looked at price increases for some of the fees we charge across the, across the board. I think we're trying to be sensitive, this board of selectmen, we're trying to be sensitive, and I'm gonna quote one of the other selectmen, Dave, said taxpayers pay money and they pay taxes. And so, the goal here is not to have a zero-sum game where it's a full hundred percent reimbursement, because you're already paying taxes, and this is part of the services that the town affords. So these increases just reflect the increasing in cost, but they're not meant to hunt pay for these actions at a hundred percent level. Am I?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So, the first one, we have the building department proposed fee schedule.
And Mike probably will just list the ones that are changing.
Amen, I was, you just read my mind, but go ahead, I'll let, if you, application fee, the current one is twenty, we're gonna raise it to thirty dollars, proposed is thirty dollars. Solo permit. It was, was seventy dollars, we're gonna raise it to a hundred dollars, we had originally said eighty dollars during a workshop, because we thought there was a fifty-dollar electrical permit that was that. We got some clarification of that, that one hundred dollar, that eighty dollars, which we proposed, or a hundred dollars being recommended by the department, is all inclusive. So we're gonna go, I recommend we go with the hundred dollars here, gentlemen, to have consensus.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that, and I sent an email off to say that I was, I just wanna make sure. We put the note right after it includes electrical permit, just so people know.
Okay.
It's not up in the air in the future. Just like the other ones that say also require electrical permit and all that, I think we should have that. That way there, there's no guessing if that department changes hands and there's other people there in the future.
So it's, you want it to re-incluse electrical?
Yep, in parentheses, just like the one below says also requires electrical permit.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last item, permit renewal after twelve months, uh, we get a maximum of two renewals, we're not, we have never charged before, we're gonna charge a fifty-dollar renewal fee, and that's mainly for administrative reasons. So we're changing one, two, three, three fees out of probably sixteen, approximately sixteen fees. So only three fees will be affected. Okay. All right, I'm gonna stop right here and, uh, as we go through each department, we're gonna open up the public, if there's any public concerns or comments on this, this is a public.
Copy.
Hearing none, I'm gonna move to the next section. Okay, this is for.
Copies.
Copies. Now, in the past, we've charged for, um, cop, the copying machine. Residents could get entitled to twenty copies and no charge per year, and residents over twenty per year were charged fifty cents each. We're gonna lower the price, we're gonna lower it to a quarter each, we're gonna cut it by fifty percent.
Except for non-residents.
Non-residents have to, we're gonna keep it at the fifty cent level. Going down the subdivision regulations, um, that's essentially a booklet, and it's a lot of paper involved, and so we're gonna charge it from five dollars, we're gonna double it to ten dollars for, it's a pamphlet, a big book. Now, for the public, I'm gonna say, if you have a feel for it. About that thick, so it's got pages and pages. And the, the site plan review regulations, a very similar process, it's just a lot of paper involved and putting together, it's ten dollars. And that's for a hard copy. These are also available online for no charge, so you can view it for no charge if you wanna view it online electronically. Going all the way down, we have an address list. Address list is, this is for, uh, you help me max focus.
That's our proposed subdivision where you have a list of addresses going around the subdivision or whatnot, or you can come in for a town address list for a section or area of town.
We've charged twenty in the past, we're going to twenty-five, again, it's, uh, more work involved. And of those fees. Approximately, uh, sixteen fees, we're changing one, two, three, four, one's a reduction. Any questions on those or all comments from the public?
Just on the, that page for the price list, I just have a question, what is the checklist, a disk?
This right here?
No, don't.
Checklist on the bottom.
Down towards the bottom.
I think that's a surveyor's checklist.
That was for you, supervisor of the checklist?
No, 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 this is.
I was gonna say that should be something different, because that's a statutory twenty-five dollar fee for the voter checklist, so I wonder what kind of checklist it is.
No, the checklist, the checklist is a subdivision checklist.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Maybe I should change the wording?
She wrote, she wrote discontinued on there, I think, discontinued.
I thought it was disk.
No, it's disk, if they want a CD.
Not floppy, a CD.
Oh, yes, I think that's a.
Yeah. But we're not changing the price on that. Go ahead.
And then I had one other thing that I noticed, and it, it may not, not count since we already had your workshop a few weeks ago, but we, we here in the office do a lot of notarizing for people, and we don't charge residents, for our notary services, and that's a, a nice little feature that people might like to know is available at no charge for a resident.
Don, should we charge for non-residents?
I, I charge a dollar for non-residents, but hardly ever get a non-resident coming in.
Especially convenience for the residents.
Okay. So you, you just wanna list it as no charge, but notary service is no charge?
You want to add it?
Yes.
I think, I think we should, it's a service we offer, and people are always pleasantly surprised when they stop by, who can notarize this, how much do I owe you, and we say, no charge for residents.
Yeah, but this is, uh, this is per area, not.
Right, no, when we get to, we will, when we get to your area.
No, but it's.
Well, this is, we all do.
We, everyone in our, every department is a notary, and we offer that service at no charge to our residents.
So even though I don't have copies.
Right.
On my list.
Right, okay.
Kind of falls under your umbrella.
Just add it to the list, put no charge.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
To residents.
Yes. Okay. Now we're on ambulance proposed fee schedule. And we haven't recommended no changes.
Did you see that? And that's why I was probably would change that.
I, I think you did change it, but it.
Well, in two thousand nineteen, we updated it quite a bit.
Yeah.
And I think they're still in the, where the, um, company we hired to do the collections, uh, they track all the different towns and, and compare their fees, and if they see they were too low, they will bring it up to us, and at this point, they're in a good spot.
Yeah, it says changes reviewed seven twenty-one, twenty-two, so it wasn't so long ago.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, police department, special duty services. Okay, Davis, you wanna talk to that? We basically have, um.
Yeah, we went through the changes and, um, we've gone back and forth with the police department a couple times about possibly lowering the administration fee down to thirteen instead of fifteen, but we agreed as a group to keep it fifteen. We moved the vehicle from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty, to increase the fund for the vehicles, for replacement vehicles, and the officers' fees went from forty-eight to fifty dollars. So officer with a cruiser is gonna be eighty-five dollars, and an officer without the cruiser will be sixty-five dollars.
And this puts the town of Dunbar in, smack in the middle of what local area police departments charge. What we don't wanna do is be the highest, which would preclude our officers getting some extra dollars, working some details, we don't wanna be the lowest, or so we're always being called upon. So we picked something, and we tried to go with the recommendations of the police department to be in the middle, so we're competitive. Any questions from public on that? I got the police department representative, any comments?
I think he has covered it.
Okay.
All right. Transfer station.
Transfer station. Now, as I said, we went with the philosophy, as I started, started this meeting, I started this hearing, the philosophy is not to get a hundred percent reimbursement to the town, but just to keep up with how our price increases that we're experiencing as a town. So, and, and we wanted around it to make it easier for the few people we have working down there that can administer it relatively easy, Dave, I'll let you talk to this.
Yeah, so, and looking at the demolition and construction, we had plywood, pressure-treated windows and sector, it was one seventy-five, they proposed it two.
Two fifty, and the board reduced it to two.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
And then the shingles, sheet rock, mixed loads and porcelain sinks, they were two twenty-five, they were gonna bring that to two fifty, and then the other line was cement blocks, bricks and pavers, that was two fifty, they wanted to leave it two fifty. We had spoken to by the department head, and they said to make it easier to calculate the cubic foot for mixed loads, they wanted to keep them all the same, so the board came up with a consensus to move all to two twenty-five, the middle of the road. So we wouldn't no longer be charging two fifty, and no longer be charging one seventy-five, so all three of those areas would be two twenty-five. Which is right in the middle. And that way, no matter what was mixed in the load of the pickup truck or whatnot, we have to do a calculation.
It makes it easier for the, for the workers down there and for the resident, where the resident doesn't have to go back, and, well, you're gonna have to separate that so we can figure it out. And, okay.
We go down through the rest.
Yeah.
Shingles, shingles in a trash can, a forty-gallon trash can, went from twelve dollars up to fifteen. Appliances went from thirteen dollars a unit to fifteen dollars a unit, that includes freezers, air conditioners, water coolers.
And why is that, that freedom's gotta be recaptured by a professional, not, we don't have that expertise in town, we have to subcontract out to have someone come in and evacuate the, uh, those units, regardless of the size.
Tires for the bicycles, wheelbarrows, lawn tractors, light truck, motorcycle, ATV, UTV, up to twenty inches, they're three dollars, um, off the rim, or on the rim for the wheelbarrows. Four dollars off the rim for the others under twenty inches, and eight dollars on the rim.
And the thing is, here's one thing I never knew, but any cut or half-filled tire, the price doubles. In other words, if you have a tire to dispose of, don't cut it up, just turn it in whole.
Yeah. You've cut it up, put it in your trash can.
Yeah. That was, that was, that was a little bit of humor by one of us selectmen, not to be taken for face value.
A commercial truck tire, up to twenty-four and a half inches, went from twelve to twenty dollars, um, on or off the rim.
Okay, bu, um.
Now we're down to bulk waste.
Bucket waste, yeah.
Mattresses, box springs went from four dollars to seven dollars each, sofas went from seven to twelve dollars each, and hot tubs, pianos, fiberglass tub showers, fiberglass truck caps went from twenty to twenty-five. All of these items, we take apart and recycle the metal and all the different types of items out of them, so it's quite a bit of work for our guys down there to separate all the different types of stuff out of these things. And the other increase was on here, was for electronic disposals, microwaves, fax machines, printers, scanners, and copiers, went from five dollars each to seven dollars each, and all TVs now are fifteen dollars each.
And the thing is, I'd like to just point out, a lot of people throw their small stereos and radios in the trash, keep it out of the trash, you're not gonna be charged for it, we recycle that separately.
So we try to make sure that these fees were not overimposing, so that the stuff doesn't get dumped on the sides of the road, and yet still made it so that, uh, the town gets some money for these services.
We were, we were smiling, because we were saying that if we raised them too high, we'd have a lot of trash debris on the, on the roadsides, and then the police department would be on our case. Okay.
Any public comment on that?
Yes, public comment on transfer station fees. Hearing none, we're gonna move on. Okay, town clerk proposed fee schedule. Of all the fees, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, thirteen fees, fourteen fees, only one was changed, the municipal agent fee went from two fifty to three dollars, and that's for vehicle registration. That covers some of the overhead and processing, that the paperwork and the computer time and all that, that the town clerk's gotta spend on getting your license, getting your registration process, am I correct?
Yes. It's really the volume. More, more people, and, uh, more to the process with many of these transactions now.
But other than that, I thank the town clerk for holding the prices, um, and things, I think, a couple years ago, we did raise dog prices, so that's all.
We raised them by a dollar, and that's the most we're allowed to.
Yeah. Any questions on town clerk proposed fee schedule? Don?
Being a cemetery trustee, we're talking vital records here, somebody comes in, they want a copy of a death certificate or something like that, do we charge them then, or?
If they wanna assert, if you have, first of all, you're probably not gonna have a death certificate.
God, we haven't been in the file.
They need to be really old for you to have them, and I'd love to see them, 'cause I'm wondering if they're missing from my files. I can work with Judy on that.
They might be copies, they may be copies of.
Are you sure it's not the burial transit permits?
No, I think there, there, there's death certificates in there, because we're gonna get them in the mail.
Okay, Don, how does that relate to fees, though? I'll let you figure this out afterwards.
If it's a certified copy, if they just want a photocopy, you can give them a photocopy, if it's a certified copy, the state requires me to charge fifteen dollars.
Should, should.
That's what I'm hoping for, yeah.
But it's a certified with town seal and my signature.
Okay, ours, ours would be.
And it's on special safety paper, but I would like to take a look at what you have.
Yeah. Monday, when the gals are in here, they can.
We can do that.
And because hers is certified, Don, it might be easier for you guys just to send them to one of them.
If it's, uh, if we charge the fifteen dollars, the state gets the bigger cut of that, we do get some, I think we get seven maybe out of that, and the state gets the rest, and that's all laid out by statute.
Okay. Any other further discussion on town clerk proposed fee schedules? Hearing none. I'd like to, uh, to propose the public hearing, and then we can vote on it. One thing we didn't address this year, and I just wanna make a comment for the record, um, two years ago, at the beginning of COVID, we closed a transfer station for commercial vehicles, for, for disposing of their trash. I, I think, uh, we did not address, we, there's a fee schedule for them, but we elected several months ago not to reopen it to, um, commercial companies, and, uh, if we ever do, we'd like to have a, I'd like to discuss the fees separately. But at this point, it's still closed, I like to maintain it's still closed for commercial vehicles.
I don't think we have the help down there, just take care.
Right, right, yeah. All right. I'd like to make a motion, we approved the fund, the fees as discussed and proposed.
My second.
Any discussion on them, gentlemen? Dave?
Nope, I think the discussion's been done, okay?
Yeah. All set? All in favor of the new fee schedules?
Aye.
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 We have an effective date on that?
No, very good.
Uh, we've ordered, it's.
The motion was made today.
Yeah.
Typically, we'll do it like the first of a month, just to, for, and we can post it on the website, we can, post his fees on the, um, the board.
First September. First September.
And I need to have BMSI come in and we can figure.
Will September first be soon enough?
That should work, I.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve these fees effective September first, twenty twenty-two.
That's good.
Need a second? Any discussion on the fees, when they take place?
Nope.
I'd just like to commend the town clerk for pointing that out to us.
Yes, thank you.
Good call. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the, uh, public hearing is now closed. Okay, Linda, don't go away.
Hello.
You're gonna give me a, a department update.
Yes, okay, uh, first of all, there was a question, uh, regarding Derek LaBranch, an appointment.
Yeah, right.
That was to the zoning board, where the term ending date of twenty twenty-four is an alternate on the ZBA.
Did we sign up on that?
Not the whole thing. Yes.
Okay, I probably did.
I didn't remember signing it.
I mean, I'll hold it, I just grabbed it from the town report, but I can go find you the original paper.
Yeah. Think we better. We, this, uh, my memory lapses, so we wanna make sure.
Yeah, so it's.
I'm glad to see new people undering some of these boards, and that's great.
Okay. Anything else?
Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Public pile. Okay, first of all, I wanted to let the board know that, um, Lean has arranged for me to get a license for, uh, Adobe. Okay, first of all, I wanted to let the board know that Lean has arranged for me to get a license for Adobe so that I can work with PDFs without constantly getting pop-ups saying, hey, buy me, so thank you for that.
Yeah, well, eventually our costs of the town are gonna go up because it's just impossible to work on shorter, fewer licenses than we need to run the town.
Aye, the emails for documentary evidence of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got your emails.
Okay.
That's your raise this year.
All right, I was gonna give you gentlemen a dog warrant, we just have a couple of dog, people who haven't licensed their dogs, but we'll take that up the next meeting, I believe the chief is not available this week, so.
Okay. Uh, we have an acting chief though, if it needs, if it needs to be acted upon, it can be acted upon.
No, I, I just put it aside, we'll, it's like two, two of them.
Okay, give the poor dogs a week.
Give the owners a week.
Okay.
Elections, our favorites. So the Democratic Party has sent me a letter listing four appointees as inspectors of elections. I've got a copy for you folks somewhere, there you go, this is just for the board, you can pass it around, it's John Daly, Philip Walker, Susan Janback and Evan Lang. I'll have the appointment papers for your next meeting for you to sign. Next on elections. Did you folks get, did you get the email about the training?
Yes.
Okay. There's a training Thursday, the twenty-fifth, it's, you don't have a meeting that night, isn't that just awesome?
Location?
Manchester, six to eight thirty.
Is it available, available online at all?
No, this is an in-person, it's for moderators, clerks, selectmen, supervisors of the checklist and ballot clerks. And it says every role depends on and affects the performance of the other roles, no pre-registration.
Wow, no pre-registration.
No pre-registration, John Trotter will be attending, John is our moderator, I will be attending as well, I have not yet heard from the others. I have received the absentee ballots from the Secretary of State. They were delivered, one box this week, one box last week, so far we've had about, we've had less than ten requests for absentee ballots, this is for the primary, that's usually a lower turnout. This'll be a really good one for selectmen, Justin to get his feet wet in. Because it, it won't be a big one, you see, it won't be a crazy one, it'll be confused.
Yep. Great.
Look at my name, uh.
Right, it'll be a.
Should we leave them all alone to let, let them get really used to it?
Oh, really nice.
Nice.
Throw me right into the mix.
So I think all of you have one of these and if you don't, you know, election procedure manual. There is an entire section here on the selectmen's duties, you might wanna brush up before, on it, before you go to that training on the twenty-fifth, so you have an idea of what they're talking about.
Just stay out of that, I'm a little nervous.
You don't have one of these?
I've memorized, I've memorized mine.
You may have this, I have an extra.
Yeah, Don.
Let's try. There, there is a lot in there, it's an, it's an easy, it's pretty specific on your duties.
It's a picture book?
No, it's not a picture book.
No, there are pictures in there, there are pictures in there.
So just also to remind you that with the change in my office staff, I'm gonna be down one person for that whole day, even if I got somebody.
Then we're gonna pull it from the other area.
Between now and then, even if I got somebody, I'd be training them, so it's really critical that you all like brush up on what's required and be able to help the others out.
John Trotter.
You know, and John too, and I don't know how available Fred's gonna be this election, so that's another key helper.
Well, the good news is a small election, so it's a good, it's feet wet.
Right, yes.
Right, but it's still a lot of work, hard.
It's still, it's a ton, it's a ton for all of us. Let's see, and I think I told you I am gonna be meeting with John Trotter next week, this is gonna be our preliminary meeting before we come to meet with the board.
Do you have the dates, the first date for the first election?
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth.
Be there, be square.
And would you be so kind to, I've worked with John, but reach out to the transfer station manager so he knows to have the required support for you the day before?
He's already, actually, the transfer station manager has already connected with me on the deal.
Excellent, I just don't want that to fall through.
We, we got it covered.
Okay.
Which election is that?
That's primary.
That's the state primary.
November is the actual.
November will be the general, yes. And that was all I had for this.
No, I've got one more for you.
Oh, you have one for me, go.
Have you advertised yet for your position and the vacancies have been advertised, your vacancies?
It is on the town website.
Any hits yet?
I've had two applications and one inquiry.
Okay, great, so we're making progress. When we.
I've had two applications and one inquiry, big difference.
Well, okay. Will you need a selectman to assist you in the selection if you?
I've got a, an, one interview set up and I'm waiting to hear back on the other, this third, the inquiry turns out did not qualify.
Dave, would you like to do it or Justin? If, it'd be, it basically, it's a, having a selectman there, since we do the hiring, it basically allows you to ask questions and learn how to do interviews and Linda takes the lead on that as far as entering the process, but I think, I think it's good that we have a voice in it and we, sometimes we can bring, we're complimentary to the town clerk as far as bringing up ideas as we ask questions.
I think either one of us is.
I've got my first one scheduled for Tuesday morning at eight thirty, trying to schedule the second one.
Eight thirty, I can't take it there.
Okay.
I can do it anytime after ten, definitely.
No, but we'll work your, on your schedule.
And I'm trying to get the second one for Wednesday morning at eight thirty. But I hope I'm right back, I heard.
Hi, actually, are you comfortable with that? I wanna make sure you're comfortable with that, because I, I, I think we, we've worked, me and you on the last one, we did a good job.
Tuesday's the ninth.
Tuesday's the ninth.
Do you wanna do it, Don, or?
I, I, I can do it.
Or do you want, what do you want to?
I'll do one and, okay, I'll, I'll do, I'll do one.
Actually, what I'd like to do for both, Don.
This should be the same.
I've just, I've got to be the same person on it, so.
Yeah. All right, Tuesday and potentially Wednesday.
Potentially Wednesday.
I didn't know, like, that way we can blame you if, uh.
Are you comfortable with that, Linda?
Yeah, it's, actually, I was gonna invite whoever was interested and I know you folks work during the day and it's real hard for you to get out, so I assumed.
Okay, so. I tell you, getting up that early is gonna be a rough experience. Only, only kidding, okay.
Well, I'm glad to see you have some applicants anyway.
I am too.
Okay.
That was all I had, you had one for me, remember?
Okay. That was it.
That was the cherry on top.
I just wanna make sure that you had some what you needed.
Thank you.
Dave, anything?
I just have one thing, Lean, maybe for our transfer station, on these clear plastic bulletin boards of every department, we could do a small eight by eleven advertising for help down there on each of the departments, because a lot of people come to these offices, might not even go to the transfer station ever.
Oh, put the ad inside our offices.
Yeah, I think just to get a few extra people, like Linda sees a ton of people.
I know, we put it on the board out here, but.
May I just comment?
No.
Nobody sees the exit sign as they're walking in the exit door. Nobody sees the one-way sign as they're standing in front of my counter, also while they're in front of my counter. What's today's date? And I've got a calendar right there, who do I make the check payable to? I have two samples right there, just saying.
And the taxes.
Speaking of.
And the tax sign, I.
I'm hoping that you could help sell it since you got your filter.
That was only requested by me. Okay.
We do, we do put it on the board out here, we could put it on the marquee, that might be.
I, I've asked Woody at the transfer station to put it out in front, not on the fence flat where Reese doesn't clearly see it driving by. Because the one guy that's working down there, we had the.
He's driving by, sorry.
A sawhorse out there, it's on there, so Woody said he was working on that.
Yeah, one other thing, the police department chief, Ramelore, very kindly put it on the PD's Facebook page. And maybe they'd be willing to do the same for the transfer station.
Ah.
Not that I got any hits from it, but it's one workplace.
Okay.
You should ask them, did you ask them? When you interview, ask them where they work at the job.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yes.
That's a good question.
I can do that, yeah, I can do that.
That way we know if it's working, then we would continue.
Yeah, 'cause she does.
It's a good, good idea, I'll find out what worked.
Go ahead, follow it up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So just how, stop him.
Just, yeah, okay.
Thanks for coming, Linda.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the mailbox items first. Okay, I got a couple emails from the transfer station, Woody, he talked about a couple hours overtime, which I did not see an issue with at all, he wants to give a free hour minimum if you can come in and pick up fresh recycling day and home day, we have consensus there, I hope that's a no brainer.
They usually do it on Sunday or Monday, so it's not every single weekday, so you really wanna make sure they are compensated, so three hours is okay to tell, Woody?
Yeah, yes.
Woody also asked a question about hauling trash crushed to dirt drunks across the street.
I was down there this week and with the dryness right now, the fire danger is huge, so I told him that we had talked about not wanting to haul a lot down that road. And I wanted to make sure we wouldn't lose our ability to burn if we did start hauling stuff there. And Woody said that he's already checked with the state people and we're not gonna lose our permit to burn if he does that. And I told him I didn't think it would be a problem during this dry season to haul some stuff over there. So I told him I'd run it for the board tonight.
I could, I could sense that.
I'm fine with that as long as we don't lose our permit up there, I'm not very concerned about.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't wanna overburden the current staff yet.
Yeah, and so right now he didn't put it in the burn pit, he held it out from there before he goes on any type of vacation, I think he's gonna haul some.
How do we haul down the road like that?
Um, he puts it right in one of our dumpsters.
Okay, and then bring the dumpster over, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, we're talking about the employment situation.
With the, that department?
Yeah. He's, well, the thing is, we've had no hits on, on the recruiting side.
We haven't, and we just did put it back on Indeed and Lean just currently put it on the Hampshire Municipal Association.
Yeah, they're working on the board.
And I've asked him to put a sawhorse out in front so that it was very visible. So I think we're gonna try a bunch of different avenues and I think maybe Brian could mention it to Chief when he's back about putting it on your page at the transfer station, looking for some part-time help.
Yeah, if you guys have a post, and I have, I have an written Facebook page, so I can get it up as well.
Okay, great.
So if you guys wanna know about theirs, I'll send it.
And I think we have it posted on our, our page on the website, right, Lean?
Yeah, we do.
Is that one of the first pop-ups you see?
At least, I think the second or third, you can still see it right on the home.
Okay, great. So that's all, all the pertinent things we talked about, the other thing would be non-public, I think, that we talk about.
Okay. All right. There was a, he still gave us some, some information concerning the crush class use, before we make a decision, like to have a bigger sample into us so we can see it, again, okay?
Yeah.
So we'll defer any decision on that.
Yep.
And I think that's it on the, on the, from, any transfer station concerns, Justin?
Nope.
Dave, anything else at this point?
The only other thing I think we can do in public here is Lean brought up the current part-time transfer station attending position, twenty-four, thirty-two hours per week. I'd like to take off the CDLC license, roll off experience surplus, only because I think it might shy some people away from the job when it's not really a requirement.
And it's more. Make it more friendly.
Yeah, make it more friendly.
Was that on job disruption?
Yeah, nobody still has a new face.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, that makes common sense.
Yeah, and then the other part of it, I wanna see if, I know we have eighteen years or older because of some of the equipment they use down there, but there might be a part-time job down there, like just overseeing the hopper, where they're not operating any of that equipment, that could be somebody sixteen and older, so I'd like to check.
I, I know, I know we discussed that, I think it's worth a lot of discussion.
Yeah, and I know if you, if you let them use all the equipment, I know that that wouldn't be allowable, but there might be a portion of that job we could do. And get some younger kids in here to work, so I'd like to check into that section of it one more time, agreed.
Yeah, what are we gonna do about the Saturday thing? You gonna leave that on there?
I don't think, I think if we just left in the twenty-four to thirty-two hours, then discuss the hours when they get in front of us instead of putting that in there, Saturdays are mandatory.
Oh, no, see, I would not make Saturday, I, I agree.
I mean, it's, we discussed that the time they come in because it could be every other or whatever we discuss when they're.
Yeah, just take that out.
We'll take that out for.
Yeah.
So you want to take it out for now, for, make it friendly?
Yeah, just, yeah, just to be a little more flexible, that's what we talk about, trying to generate, generate a little bit more.
Yeah.
Even if we get someone. Someone come in during the week, completely during the week and give a break to the current staff.
Yeah. And the fourteen eighty-four per hour, is that the current?
That's the current rate, yeah, with the extra, the increase, it's possibly changes, yeah.
Just for the board's reference, I went to U-Haul, I have a hitch put on middle of the week last week. And I asked just out of curiosity, because they had two new applicants come in while I was there on South Willow Street, get one put in. And they're starting pay is thirteen dollars an hour down there to start. They have a couple of bonuses that they step people up fairly quickly, but you know, this year is just about fifteen to start.
We're committed, we're committed.
I think this is a little bit more physical than that job, but I mean, they're installing hitches and, you know, start behind the counter. So I don't think it's all just money in that area, you know, I think it's.
And you've kinda reiterated that before and I agree with you.
I just, I, it was, it was nice to see and ask another place of business, that's not always clean work, what they're, what they're getting from people that's sparring out with, so.
Okay, thank you, Dave. All right, moving on, we talked about crush class, now we have something from the ten-year plan, this is the DOD solicitation. As you recall, we have something in a ten-year plan already, which is kinda, it's on the priority list, I think, we have the.
Roundup, yeah, that is on the plan and it's, it's high on the priority list.
And all we need is one fatality there and make it raise to the very topic that.
I didn't have the other ideas that I had to put on the ten-year plan, I don't know, Brian, have you guys thought about any safety issues on the ten-year plan for the?
Nothing that I've heard about, and I guess they have just the, obviously, page.
Yeah, which we're already in the queue for that one, sorry.
And it was, that was a collaborative effort to get that on the list and Central Regional was really helpful to us as far as, Sergeant Rumman, I, at the time, now Chief Rumman. But I think we should.
We shouldn't think of any others.
I don't wanna fluff it with stuff we don't need, some of the other communities would think, put things like bicycle trails, bike paths in.
Sidewalks, and that doesn't.
Sidewalks. I knew last time the sidewalks came up, even right here from here to the school, it was a huge issue.
Yeah.
With some of the butters, so.
And another thing is walking trails, I don't know, the thing is, can walking trails of a conservation committee use any money or proposals? Is there a deadline on this, that we have to get something in too?
Donna forwarded that to us and actually it came through him as well, and it's just something.
If you want, you could send it to Brett at the conservation commission and they can look at it, August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, okay, we could do that.
Just because, again, the walking trails, that's one of the neat things about Dunbar, to have these walking trails out there, I'd say if, there's always looking, conservation is always gonna make improvements, maybe they could get some money towards those improvements, it'd be a win-win. So let's run it by them and just circle the date on it so they at least aware of the date.
Wait, can I have one more thing in the mailbox that we got?
Okay.
It's not on our agenda here, I don't think.
Okay, go ahead, go for it.
But I wanted to run it from the police department. There's a clean diesel program with the state. And they have, I think it's like fourteen million dollars to spend on towns and municipalities upgrading their vehicles with a clean diesel program. And I would just like to try and think about this, maybe when we go to replace some of the police vehicles. I know we just upgraded our highway department diesel, so we're not really in a position to do that with those vehicles right now. But maybe if we read in there, there might be some availability to fund a part or all of one of those vehicles, if we look into that situation, they got a lot of money, they're trying to give it away to different towns and you know, a lot of towns don't know how to use it, our town doesn't have the need of a large vehicle right now, but it might be able to be used for a police vehicle.
In other words, convert it, go for a diesel vehicle.
Right.
It probably lasts longer too.
So I just, I'd run it, you guys could look at it if you wanna run it by, Link had forwarded to you guys.
Now, were you running the vehicle, the one that blew up or froze?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, see, I think a diesel might be more reliable for you.
Hopefully.
You, you get the first-hand experience. I don't think they can speed as fast as a, as a gasoline, but.
Yeah, they might, they might last a little longer.
Exactly, we don't, we don't do speeding in town too often. Okay, if you look, yeah, that, that is a great idea.
Yeah.
So we can forward that paperwork to them?
I'm just thinking, because I've seen, it comes to us the last couple of years, we've seen it several times. I'm just thinking, like, 'cause I've seen, it comes to us, the last couple of years, we've seen it several times, and I read just a brief description to see if there's anything we can do, but, you know, police vehicle came up in my head today, and it might, might not be something we can do, but.
Especially if we take one of the, uh, we usually have to replace with one of the older vehicles, and I think we're, to a point, we're almost all replaced, but.
Yeah.
We could find something to turn it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Alright, thank you. Anything else, Dave, there?
Um. I would just like to start a, a little list, Lean, of stuff that we can, um, check off, that we've already given Woody tonight, that you could maybe address in an email, that he's looking, answers back.
Yes, I wrote right on the email that was here, um.
Okay, so dirt doctors haul the trash, we're okay with consensus?
Yes. Yes, uh, three hours, yes.
Minimum, yes, yeah.
And then.
The glass, if we could get a sample of the glass?
Yeah.
Um. He also did make a note that we might have a resident complain about him hauling, um, the brush down there already, uh, that lives on that road. We'll talk to you about afterwards. Um, he's still working on coverage for his, uh, vacation time, although the people he has in place, he thinks are gonna step up to the plate, and make the coverage work. Um, he did get, um, the new guy to do the, um, hauling for him, to agree with it.
He did, good, that's great news.
Did. It's great news, but the guy wants two hundred a trip, not a hundred, but that's still a four hundred and fifty dollar savings in town.
Can we meet him halfway, or?
Uh, the guy about to, opposed anything halfway, but what he did do is say that he has to, if he has to come in and run the equipment, he will do that under that regular, uh, hourly figure, and we already agree, I think that's a, we're halfway there, so I think that's a win-win.
We'll make it, we'll, we have a consensus.
I told my one from the board tonight, so consensus is two hundred, it's okay.
Okay, so we should put something in writing?
Well, I'm gonna give you the other half of it now.
Okay, so.
So, now that the board has given that consensus, um, he wants to know how you want him to document the trips, Lean, this is more for your office, so that.
Okay.
You can pay him, so something from your office, and how you want documented his time for the trips.
Alright, I'll talk to Woody, what's my idea?
It's a flag raise.
Yeah, it's a flag raise.
I just want it.
I'm sorry.
I'm just waiting.
Woody just. And then, um, we talked last time about a consensus to waive his physical, since he's already got the DOT physical paperwork.
Okay.
So I'd like to make sure we give him something to show that's waived.
Okay.
And then I'd like to give him the rest of the paperwork that the town requires to hire the guy. Cause he will be getting paid the hourly fee when he works.
Right, he'll be on payroll, but the, the two hundred will be stifling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. So Woody, Woody just showed up, was he come from a fire?
Yes, I sent you a message.
Oh, I didn't get it, sorry about that. Um, but anyway, we just were going down through your department, the thing that we could talk about in public. Um, the board just made a consensus to go ahead and do the two hundred dollars per trip for your backup driver.
Okay.
Um, we agreed with the hourly fee to pay him, that you had to run the equipment in the yard while you're out. Um, Lean will get to you on the, on the documentation for the hauling time, it'll just be the number of trips he made, given into Lean, and then whatever hours he worked.
Okay. Okay.
And probably just give him the handwritten one for those, 'cause it's only gonna be a few hours.
Okay.
We'll, we'll use the time sheets, the time cards, that would just.
Yeah, we could do that.
That might be easier.
Yeah, okay. For just the time in the yard. And, um, we've done a waiver on his physical for the paperwork.
Cause he has a, uh.
DOT card.
Yes, yes.
He just has to provide.
So Lean will get the rest of the town paperwork together, 'cause we have to pay him hourly as well.
Right.
Um, I told him you're still working on the coverage, um, and I didn't say your vacation dates.
Right.
In public meeting, uh, for privacy purposes, but before we leave, I have it written at home, we could give them to Lean, so she has them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I did let him know that one of the town residents may complain about you hauling brush down the road already, just left it at that.
Yep.
Um, the glass, could we get a sample of that, so we can stick our hand in it, try and cut ourselves again?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, a three-hour minimum on a home day cleanup is fine.
Okay.
Consensus from the board. Um, and we did, as a board, give you, uh, hauling trash consensus, um, especially now when it's real dry and you don't wanna burn because of the weather.
That was brush.
Brush, oh, brush, yeah.
So, uh, that being said, we'd like to still burn occasionally in there, so we don't lose our ability to do that, and the neighbors are used to it still.
You'll never lose your ability.
Okay.
You'll lose your ability, Barry. We, we do for submarines sometimes. Hopefully.
So, uh, those are the items that I wanted to go over in public.
Okay.
About your department, so that's, we were just going through when you walked in.
There's gonna be a discussion in non-public, if you'd like to stay around. Okay, thank you, Dave.
Oh, how about the younger person, position?
Oh, just so you're, we were looking at the, um, I'm gonna go with that, 'cause I have it here. We were looking at a couple of things on the part-time transfer station attendant. I wanna make a few things in your description here, or the one that Lean has, to make it a little bit more user-friendly looking when they're looking at it online. One of the things says a CDL B license or roll-off experience is a plus, for that attendant, I'm gonna pull that right off, because that's kinda like the assistant.
Right.
Manager one, and I don't wanna scare anybody away, thinking it's too involved for them. And then, uh, we're gonna take off, the Saturdays aren't mandatory, and talk about it to them in person. Because we may go to like, if we get enough people every other Saturday or something like that. And then, uh, the one last thing, and maybe you know the answer to this, um, where it said must be eighteen or older minimum. I was thinking where, at the hopper, where they aren't running any equipment, and you're not requiring to do anything else, if we could get somebody sixteen and above to do that type of job.
I know we discussed it before. Yeah, it's, I know, I called Department of Labor on it, it can't be within fifty feet of machinery, I came from them, I don't know if it's.
Can we, can we check that currently, just to double-check it, 'cause I know that, you know, people are using younger and younger people to try and fill positions everywhere, just would like to double-check that. But, you know, it'd have to be something that you know, that, you know, this person can only do certain jobs down there.
Okay. Alright, um, there's, N H A, I'm thinking, I wonder, when we read this, Lean went through it, I went through it a little bit. Um, we may be receiving money, you know, the government's been printing all this money up, we're gonna get our share.
Yeah, it's basically leftover COVID money that they're sharing through, uh, roadwork and bridges.
Right, and, uh, I'd say it's, uh, we just gotta be vigilant as it comes in, we're gonna make sure we apply for any, if there's any application, we're gonna apply for it. We're gonna make sure we, and Lean's gonna be, uh, monitoring any income as it comes in, but we probably won't get it to, towards the end of the year.
And it has to go towards roadwork, so it's not like you can put any other department, so.
But the thing is, what I brought up is, uh, the planning board have, they have two potential subdivisions, which will require a portion of the town to pay for some of that. And normally that would come out of the, either the budget, or we'd have to plus up the road, uh, the, uh, the road agent's budget to cover for those subdivisions, because there's a town portion of that. Some of that money could be used for that, those improvements.
And I think the bridge is what, forty-seven thousand?
Forty-seven, yeah.
Seventy-eight thousand for the roadwork, so it's pretty substantial.
Yeah. But roads aren't exactly inexpensive either.
No.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that, Lean, if you just keep us, and we'll keep monitoring that, that's great. Alright, um, public comment, I'm gonna open up, I'm gonna start with Mr. Robert Montal.
I'll pass.
Pass. You're on the back row, public comment, chief, acting chief, public comment. Linda, public comment, okay, I'm gonna close public comment, I'm gonna, we're gonna pull it, we're gonna go in non-public, but I like to just, to have the selectman talk and the town administrator talk. We usually wait to the very end of the meeting, but sometimes it's not recorded, so at this time, I wanna get on the, on the, uh, tape here, Lean, anything for?
Only, I want to let the board know that we have gotten a second payment of the, um,[1758.74]